Let me know when you're ready, Jim. You ready?
Yeah.
Okay. All right, call to order the, the special meeting of the village, the Planning and Zoning Commission for the Village of Campton Hills for this Wednesday, June 18th. Roll call, please. Mr. Brown.
Yeah. Commissioner LoLario.
Absent.
Absent. Commissioner Anderson?
Here.
Commissioner Teet?
Absent.
Commissioner Kopeck?
President.
Commissioner Johnson?
President.
Commissioner McKelvey?
Here.
Chairman Frederick?
Here.
Okay, we have a quorum. All right, item number three, approved minutes of the Planning and Zoning Commission's special meeting of May 22nd, 2025. I had one comment on page one, the very bottom paragraph, starts with Nick Botner. If you go to the third line where it starts with "Mr. The 30 to 50% goal was flexible for negoti-" just strike that whole line. We're missing a name, but it also just repeats what was being said before that. So, strike "Mr. The 30 to 50% goal was flexible for negotiation."
Okay.
I just, that's my comment. And the other, the second line in there, the quotation "that give flexibility," I guess that plural, "that gives flexibility," but it's just a grammatical thing. Other than that, I didn't have any other comments. Any other members have comments on?
Yeah.
Yep. Mr. Kopeck, your microphone, please. Thank you.
All right. On page three, second paragraph, starting Mr. Kopeck said, I'd like the last sentence to read. He also noted the printed version is difficult to read when printed as eight and a half by 11 with single wide column format for most of the text. I've talked to other designers and they basically said it's awkward, so. I had made that suggestion earlier, but apparently it hasn't been considered.
Any other comments? Corrections? All right, having heard none, can I get a, a motion to approve the meeting, the special, the agenda or the minutes of the May 22nd as amended?
So moved.
Mr. Kopeck, do you have a second?
Second.
Ms. McKelvey, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Okay, motion carries. All right. Item number four, public comment. Let me start first by making a comment. Item number four is public comment not on agenda items. I'm sure most of you are here for something that's on the agenda, either the public hearing for Headwaters Academy or the blank, or the comprehensive plan. So this would be a time for comments that are not on the agenda. So if you had something about some of the zoning issue or something like that, you'd want to make a comment of that, this is the time to do that. So I'll invite you up, if anybody wants to make a comment other than what's on the agenda. If not, we'll press on with the next item, just checking. Yes, sir. I'm sorry, I can't hear you. Beg your pardon? This is a Plan and Zone Commission, we don't do anything with, with the grants that has to do with road resurfacing and it, we don't do anything with that. So we work with zoning and ordinances that, so that would not be our department. That'd be a great question for the village board. Nick probably help you out with that, all right? Sorry. Beg your pardon? The village board? They have a, they have a meeting every?
First and third Tuesday.
First and third Tuesday of every month at, what's the standard time? Seven o'clock, first and third Tuesday?
Yes.
That'd be the time to show up for one of their meetings. Okay? Any other comments on non-agenda items? All right. Very good. So before we get into item number five, which is the public hearing of the Headwaters Academy, I just want to give a, just a very brief explanation of the process and then we'll proceed along, all right? So, special, this is a public hearing and the idea is public hearing is for the Planning and Zoning Commission, which is us up here, is to hear and listen to you. It's not an interactive, ask me questions, I answer you questions, right? It's us as a, as a board to listen, or commission to listen to the concerns and the comments of the, of the residents, all right? So that's, that's the overall arch-reaching, reaching point of this. So my plan is to have the petitioner come forward and make their case or just to basically present their petition and, and then after that, we will have, public will be able to come and make their comments and, and then basically after, no, there are no more comments, that's completed, if it all ends tonight, we will then have discussion with the board up here and can ask some questions then, all right? That's the overall plan for this evening. So with that, let's see if there's anything else. I think that's all I wanted, comments I wanted to make right now. So if nothing else, the petitioner, the microphone up there is, I didn't make sure it was on, I'm not sure if it's, just make sure that's on before. Yep. Do they have like batteries in it or?
All right, does that work?
Much better, thank you.
Wonderful.
Yes.
All right, good evening. My name is Sarah Elliott and before I go farther, I'm going to ask you all to take a moment to really clear any preconceived notions about what we're doing with our project at Headwaters Academy and really listen to the comments being made. I am the executive director at Headwaters Academy and I grew up in Campton Hills. I went to Wasco and then Fearsen when y'all moved the boundary back when I was in fourth grade. I returned to Campton Hills 12 years ago with my family to raise, to raise my children with my husband. We live out on Countryview Lane and our property borders the property that we're talking about today, 42W on Campton Hills Road. So we share, it is our, our eastern property and the western edge of, of that, of Campton Hills Road property. So my three children started by attending the local public schools and then we ended up around COVID at a nature-based Montessori program in Elburn and it was an incredibly better fit for the needs of my kids. As they grew older, we have found there are very limited private secular options in Kane County and none in our immediate area. In response to this, I set out with three other parents to launch a school. Headwaters was incorporated in the fall of 2024 as a non-for-profit, 501(c)(3) status with a mission of education. It is a small, community-rooted micro-school with, that will serve approximately 25 students beginning this school year 2025-2026. We are working with families who are deeply committed to their children's learning and development. This is not a commercial enterprise or a business. This is a mission-driven, non-for-profit. My parents, Dan and Sally Harmon, who could not be here tonight, have invested in Headwaters Academy through the purchase of the property. They have been residents of Campton Hills for 49 years. They are deeply invested in the community here. The Campton Hills Road property is a five-acre residential parcel. It includes, it is at the edge of the village on Campton Hills Road at the western end. It includes a single-family home, a barn, fenced pastures and gardens, and is an ideal environment for experiential, nature-connected learning. Concerns for traffic and noise are understandable. We have added a circle drive to alleviate traffic off of Campton Hills Road. We fully support any right-hand turn requirements out of the drive to alleviate further traffic during pickup and drop-off times. Having lived on Campton Hills Road now for 12 years and walked my dog a lot, I can attest that it is not a high-traffic county road. It's a county road, it is not high-traffic. I may walk for 15 minutes and see one or two cars. The, the home at Headwaters property is set back from the, our, the house on the Headwaters Academy property to the nearest neighbor's house is over 300 feet with natural buffers and open acreage in between. From a zoning perspective, this proposal meets the criteria for special use variance. The property's layout, use and scale are consistent with zoning allowances for residential areas. There is precedence for this in Campton Hills, most notably the Farmhouse School. A culinary education program was also granted special use variance to operate in a residential neighborhood. Their property is approximately half the size on a much busier road and in much closer proximity to the residents in Fox Mill. Additionally, most small Montessori schools and nature-based schools across our country are located in residential neighborhoods as these environments best support their educational approaches. And just like the vision and mission statements of the Village of Campton Hills, we too wish to encourage environmental stewardship, honor rural heritage, we wish to ensure the continued excellence of schools to educate our children. That's directly from the mission statement here in, in Campton Hills. We will be working closely with our local fire department and the Illinois State Board of Education to ensure compliance in all relevant areas of health and safety and regulation. We are fully open to any requirements there may be for, from the village and we are here to collaborate, to make this project happen. We want to maintain the character of our neighborhood and community. We believe Headwaters Academy will be a valuable and respectful addition to Campton Hills, something to be proud of, and we respectfully request your support. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. All right. At this time, I'd like to offer the public to make their comments and, and I could randomly call this up, but I'll think I would just ask you to just take your turns at the microphone, stand at the mic and first come, first served, make your comments. Yeah, Mr. Brown?
I'm sorry, a limit on each speaker and swearing in?
Yeah, we're going to swear, we'll swear in. I'm not going to limit the time that you can speak, but I want you to be respectful of everybody's time. I think, you know, repeating the same thing over and over, you know, we get it, so we just try to be respectful of other people's time, but I don't want to say, hey, everybody gets three minutes and you're done. If you have a lot to say, perhaps maybe, there's about 23, there are a lot of people who would like to speak, so maybe after five minutes or so, you go back to the back of the line and then just reengage there. So I just want to be respectful, everybody gets a chance, I want everybody to have the opportunity to speak, okay? So.
The battery's going to die because the, has anyone put in batteries? I don't know.
Last night. Last night.
Yeah.
Last night.
You should get backup batteries.
Do you know where they are?
Yeah, I don't either. So worst case, we could probably drag a microphone.
What size are they?
Drag a microphone, we'll have them speak over there. So worst-case scenario, that's what we'll do, okay? So that's a backup plan.
That works.
Yeah. All right.
Double A or triple A?
Double A. So for those who wish to speak tonight, the village attorney will swear you in.
So the easiest way for me to do this is everybody who wishes to speak, you can go ahead and raise your right hand right now. Do you swear to tell the whole truth, the whole truth and nothing above the truth?
Yes.
Thank you, you're sworn in.
All right. If, who would like to speak first? Please.
Thank you.
And, and I know these, we have some, filled out a couple of comments.
I did.
I appreciate that, that's great. Just maybe when you step up, just say your name so for the record, that way it'll be, it'll help the recorder.
Absolutely.
I appreciate it, thank you.
No problem. Hi, good evening, my name is Dana Merk. I'm a resident of North Aurora where I've called home for the last decade. I'm a mother, a wife, a registered nurse, a university professor and a co-founder of Headwaters Academy. It has been a privilege and a labor of love to create something so meaningful for our children and the community. We've built a space where children and families can feel a sense of belonging, learn and grow together. My sons will attend Headwaters Academy along with their classmates and friends who they've grown up with over the last five years. This group of children are absolutely magical together. They are bright and curious and thoughtful. They build fast and lasting friendships, they're compassionate problem solvers and deeply feeling kids. They march to the beat of their own drum. They're excited to go to school each day and their bright lights can shine in a smaller school environment instead of dimming in the crowd of a larger public school. I know everyone thinks their children are something special, but when you witnessed, when you can witness this untouched innocence of childhood, when they learn and create and grow together, it reminds us of why we're volunteering countless hours in creating a school from the ground up. This is the school of our dreams, our children's dreams and one that will provide years of education and service to the local community. Headwaters embodies bravery and innovation. We're not a business, we're not in this to make money. We're here for the children and we're here to serve the community. We couldn't find a school for our children, so we took the leap and we built it ourselves. We look so forward to creating community partnerships with the Village of Campton Hills and growing together. Thank you so much for your time and consideration.
And the next one who would like to speak, just keep, you can either form a line or just take the opportunity, just one. Yeah, there you go.
I don't do this very often. My name is Diane Bingham and I live on Farmview Road. My property backs up to this prop, to this Headwater property. I, I am totally against it. I moved out to this country, out to the country 25 years ago from Naperville. So if anybody knows Naperville, you know how crazy it is. I moved out for peace and quiet and I've stayed here this long because that's what it is. It's a beautiful property, it's beautiful area. She said that she owns the other property on the house, on the other, on the corner. I hope they will maintain their property better than what they're talking about because when I drive by it, it doesn't look like it's been maintained properly. The backyard, the farm area is horrible. I'm afraid that they will not maintain the property. I don't want kids running around screaming. I don't want to have them using it for events because they're advertising that they're going to be renting the space out for events. That means, who knows who's coming in and what's going to happen. You're going to have more than enough traffic on Campton Hills, extra. Kids running out onto the street, maybe, maybe not. You're going to have people going down Campton Road, missing the driveway because they can't see it because of the way the trees are and they're going to go down to my street or the other street to turn around, which is going to create more traffic on a cul-de-sac street. There's a lot more I can say. There's other documents that I have been given for the way they've filled out their documents for the closing at the property. They were supposed to maintain it as a residential house and somebody was supposed to be living there. Doesn't sound like that's going to happen. And then there's some other issues that I think legally we'll get into later, but I'm against it and there's a lot more people that I understand that are against it that weren't able to come, so. I do not want this in my neighborhood. I moved out here, I pay a lot of tax, I kill myself to take care of my property. I don't want to have the day come where I have to move for whatever reason.
And my property's down because nobody wants to live there because of the school and the way it's been, the property is just being built. So that's my view for now.
Thank you. Thank you, Holly. Okay, the batteries just died. It's a TV timeout. Thank you, Holly. Okay, next, next to speak? Okay.
My name is Holly Boron. I live on Foxfield Drive, which is just outside of the notice area essentially from this property. I had heard about this through some chatter in the community and I was extremely excited. I have three kids, my oldest is already out of college, my middle son was homeschooled for years, he chose to go to Thompson where he is now, and my youngest is approaching eight and we have strictly homeschooled him and tried out some other microschools in the area. We are a non-religious household. Religion tends to creep into these microschools and when I heard about this, we were extremely excited. We, we have not planned to enroll our youngest in this school yet, but just having it as an option was very exciting to me. So then also through community chatter, we've, well, before I say that, my husband and I almost bought the Farmhouse School, it's up right now. We almost dumped a million dollars so that we could rent out the space to create a micro school because we knew that the need would be. And then through community chatter, we heard this, well, we didn't want to be, there were a lot of problems with the Farmhouse School, so that's why we didn't go forward with that. But when we found out that this was happening kind of in our backyard, I just, I never imagined that there were going to be people in Campton Hills against this because it's just spectacular, what, the idea of what they're going to do. As being a member of the Planning Commission before, I'm well aware of our zoning ordinance. You don't need permits to have a daycare, anybody can start a daycare in their house. These are young children, screaming children, dumped. It's, you know, they're, they're, anybody could have a daycare essentially with our zoning ordinance and anybody could have, run music lessons, you know, you have a five-acre parcel, you could have trumpet lessons in the backyard, to be quite honest, and nobody could say boo about it. You can have horse riding and training in, on your property. The village has nothing to do with that. We're talking about little kids, we're talking about families that are looking for alternate options and spending top dollar for this. You know, this isn't just like throw your kids there and they're going to scream in the yard the entire time. I mean, Montessori-inspired, micro-school, nature-based education is, is top of the line. So another thing I wanted to bring up, and I'm not going to be very popular for doing so, Campton Township is running day camps and schools on their property and they're, according to our zoning ordinance, no schools are allowed in open space, farm zoning or FB zoning. So what they're doing and they have been doing for a long time is technically not allowed. The Kane County ordinance that we originally adopted in 2007 fully allowed what they want to do here, they would have had to ask no one to do so unless the state required, you know, whatever they require. Campton Hills would have had nothing to do with this, the county would have had nothing to do with this if we would have still been under the Campton, or the Kane County ordinance. I did a research on the property myself, as I would have done had I been on the Plan Commission still, and it's extremely private, it's hundreds of feet away from the nearest residence, so the fears, I think if this had been done a little quieter, nobody would even know it was going on.
Hello. My name is Dee McDuffie and my husband and I have lived at our house on Countryview Lane since 1998. Like our neighbors, we moved there because of the beautiful landscape, rural environment, peacefulness of this residential area. We are upset to hear that one of our neighbors decided they would like to change all of this by attempting to open a Montessori school on Campton Hills Road in our residential area. My concerns are many. Firstly, safety. Staff and parents with children will be pulling in and out of the school on a 50 mile an hour road, Campton Hills Road, off of a single car width driveway. Many people in the area walk, walk their dogs, ride their bikes, especially there are groups of cyclists that come in packs down Campton Hills Road. The constant people pulling in and out of that school would create a, very much a safety concern. The property has a creek running along the whole western side of the property. The water in this creek, which is Mill Creek, rises, sometimes has a current after a big rainfall. That used to be much worse back in the day when we first moved there. There are a lot of drain tiles that were placed in that area to help it from not going over the top of Campton Hills Road, but nonetheless, there's still a rise in water there. When they held their open house, they actually cordoned off that whole area and had people park there, which I'm pretty sure is not such a great idea. And the back of the property has a pond within feet of the back door. Is that good for kindergarten children? I'm not sure. In the back of the property, they have old, I believe rusty wire fencing still from back in the day when it was a farm. And there's no fencing to contain children from the 50 mile per hour road, Campton Hills Road on the property. This is a residential property, so therefore has no commercial safety features. Traffic is also a problem. After attending their fundraising open house on May 17th, we were told that there were approximately 18 children, K through 8, that have already enrolled for the August 2025 start date. Although the Montessori school has not been approved or rezoned by the village, there's also no parking lot on the property. Where are all the staff and parents going to park? Hopefully not on the two adjacent streets, Countryview Lane where I live or Farmview Road. This will increase traffic exponentially, especially if they decide to hold year-round school or expand their program K through 12 in the fall of 2027, like they mentioned and which is on their website. Again, many people in the area walk, walk their dogs, ride their bikes. Additional traffic and people pulling in and out of the school is of great concern. The noise with increased traffic, the noise will increase. With the possible number of children and increased activity on the property, it will increase the noise. They recently published on their website that they would love to host your quote "event" at this residential property and for some reason quickly removed the page from the website. And I know we've got a screenshot of that. Just to note, again, they have filed as a 501(c)(3). We have covenants in the area. The residential property in question is a part of Campton Hills Farm Subdivision Covenants recorded on June 12th, 1972, document number 1229233. The covenants clearly state, quote, "to provide for the development of and said land as a residential area of high quality and character to protect the owners of tracts therein against such improper use," unquote. Thank you very much.
My name is Vince Kelly and I live on Farmview Road also. There's currently a corn and bean field that separates my property from this property, 13-acre parcel. I can get into all the stuff that everybody keeps complaining about. I'm actually, have lived on Farmview Road for my entire life, I was born there. When my mom passed away, my wife and I moved back there because of how beautiful it is, knowing what a secluded place it is. There's farmers directly across the street, their whole entire family is still farming, it's not going to get built up. Never, never in my life have I thought there was going to be a school built in our Campton Hills Farm subdivision. So I just, I'll be quick, I wanted to jump here, up here right after her and follow up with the covenants. These are recorded documents with Kane County, they stay with the land. I know Mr. Brown has been given a copy and I know Mrs. Wojnicki has been given a copy also. So I just wanted to read two of the rules from the covenants and these covenants have been upheld in the court of law already. They are a standing document, they cannot be changed other than once every 10 years. The next time that would be changed, could be changed by a vote of the property owners. by a vote of the property owners would be 2032. Rule number one. No tract nor any structure located thereon shall be used for any business or commercial purpose except farming or in such a manner as to cause noxious odors or create an annoyance or nuisance. Well, I'm pretty sure everyone here will suggest that a school in our quiet rural area would be an annoying nuisance. Rule number 11, 11a. No structure, whatever, except structures appertinent to a farming use shall be erected, placed, or permitted on any tract except one private residence to be used only for occupancy as a dwelling by one family only with the necessary or customary outbuildings. So again, these are legal documents. I know everyone here has been forwarded copies of everything. We're to find where it's recorded in Kane County. So pretty much should be a nonstarter here, in my opinion. So, thank you.
Hi, my name is Ruby Elliott. I'm 12 years old, and I've lived in Campden Hills since I was a baby. I went to public school for kindergarten and first grade, and then I switched to Montessori school, which has helped me a lot. I've always been sensitive to loud noises and big crowds. And the smaller school environment made it easier for me to focus and feel comfortable. This fall, I will be going to Headwaters Academy. It is going to be a quiet, small school where we can spend time outside. That kind of school helps me do well. I think Campden Hills should support Headwaters because it gives kids another way to learn, especially kids who might not fit in as well as in a regular classroom. We live right next door to the Headwaters property. In all the time we've lived there, I've heard barking dogs, neighborhood parties, and even fireworks. All of those things are far louder than anything I've experienced during recess at school. Kids playing outside at recess isn't disruptive. It's what school is supposed to sound like. I hope you'll say yes to Headwaters Academy. It will help kids learn in a peaceful, caring environment, and it will be a good part of the community. Thank you for listening.
Hello. My name is Rowan Merk. I live in North Subura. I am 12 years old. I will be a seventh grader at Headwaters Academy this fall. Headwaters is a loving and welcoming school, and the parents have worked very hard to create this school. It is a space full of beautiful nature, something we really wanted, a place where my fellow classmates and I could excel at learning and everyday life skills and to grow into great adults. I'm excited to learn at my own pace and make new friends. Thank you for your time.
Good evening. My name is Ray Sandifer, and I too am a resident of Campden Hills, I'm sorry, of Countryview Lane. First, I'd like to remind my neighbors as well as this board that the reason why we are here is not to debate whether or not a school is of importance to the area. What we are here to discuss is the specific variance to a specific residential piece of property and its accessibility for a use other than what has been stipulated and already comment made with respect to the culture as well as the original covenants of the area. I'm skeptical of this proposed variance on the grounds of both insufficient infrastructure as well as the ambiguity with which the applicants define their intentions. Headwaters Academy states that their institution aligns with the concept of a microschool. Now, to be clear, a microschool is most similar to a homeschool concept. And although Illinois, the major, a major difference between a homeschool versus a microschool is that of class size and enrollment. A homeschool, as the name suggests, is defined by a very small enrollment and may consist of one or two or even three families. This scenario does not require a special use variance. Illinois and Campden Hills do not regulate the enrollment of a microschool. However, the generally accepted principles defines a microschool to include no more than 15 to 20 students. By Sarah's own admission of a current enrollment of 25, and according to their public declarations on their website, I'm going to increase that number based on their declarations of having 21 persons enrolled with an additional nine applicants in progress. So for round numbers, let's assume 30 students potentially for the school year of 2025, 2026. This constitutes an increase of 30 or more persons in the daily occupancy of a structure that was, and a residential area that was designed for single-family use. This will, this will increase 30-plus daily increase in vehicle traffic just coming to and from the said property. A 30-plus daily increase in the load of a septic system on property that is only designed for a typical family of four. In addition, paving and parking requirements can easily impose a risk to the established watershed or even the flow of Mill Creek, which runs through the property. There are also two registered tax offenders that live within two-thirds of one mile of the proposed special use. Who is looking out for their rights? And more importantly, what risk does the school propose? How does the school propose to mitigate other crime and safety issues that may be introduced to the area that was not originally intended? As a school, does the proposed special use place any additional restrictions or impediments to existing lawful or constitutional rights of the citizenry within the impacted zone? Lastly, is the applicant petition in accordance with the current land covenants and other regulations that may take precedence over the determination of its special use? I thank you for your time.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Mary Johnston. I am not a Campden Hills resident, but I am a lifelong Kane County resident, born and raised in Batavia and St. Charles, growing up just seven minutes from the Headwaters property, and a current resident of Batavia with my husband Dan and two sons, Dominic and Tucker, who are attending Headwaters Academy this fall as middle school students. I'm a veteran educator with over 20 years of experience teaching in public schools and currently serving as the Director of Education for a local STEM nonprofit. I know the nonprofit world well. Parenting is not a journey for the fate of heart. I think many of you can agree with that. You send your children to school and hope that your child you have brought into the world will be nurtured, supported, and thrive when they go off to school in that setting. However, that does not always happen, and that definitely didn't happen for us. With our rapidly growing communities, creating larger schools, larger classrooms, our children, like our boys, have fallen through the cracks. They've experienced bullying, loss of autonomy, and a push to minimize who they are as individuals. As parents, we are so invested in our children growing into adults who are stewards of the earth, who are invested in the communities they were raised in, and who will develop into well-rounded adults. Our search for a close, secular school that could meet these needs has been a challenging one until we set foot on the Headwaters property. This nestled property has opened the door for the boys to see the beauty and the stillness, has created a deep need to want to cultivate and care for the beautiful property, often asking when the next gardening date is to take care of the property and investing time to get the pond restored. It has reintroduced the joy to learn for them. We have been searching so long for our place for our children to belong, a place that instills joy and excitement rather than immense anxiety and overwhelm, a place that creates lasting community and gives back, a place that's not only committed to educating children to be stewards of the earth, but also to cultivate, learn, and develop a deep connection to the rich ecosystems and habitats of Campden Hills. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Lori Innisany. I also live on Farmview Road. We've lived there for 19 years. I came, I wanted to back up the last commentary. Sorry, I didn't catch her name. We have done the same thing over the years with our family. I raised four boys in the house at the end of the street. A lot for the same reasons, but we did it in our house with our family instead of having to buy a house in part of a community that was already settled to do the same things but as, you know, a house that was purchased in someone else's community. We raised our children. They planted plants and did all of that same stuff but in a house that we maintained for them and did all of those wonderful things. So what I'd like to say is basically all of the same things that were said by the gentleman prior. The house was bought in October of '24. The business license was secured right after that date, so there was no permissions asked. There was nothing put into the county or the township. There was no door-to-door knocking with the neighbors to say, hey, this is what we're proposing to do there. There was no heads up, no nothing like that. Our concerns are, you know, the fire safety, the fencing, the Campden Hills Road. It's an equestrian community, so there are horses that walk up and down. There's a bridle path that runs around. That's part of the covenants as well. We have children in our neighborhoods, so if there's an increase in traffic on Farmview Road or Countryview, you know, we have younger kids that go up and down the streets, back and forth between houses, so that's of huge concern. On top of it, there's going to be unknown strange people that are going back and forth if that, there's an uptick in that traffic. There's privacy issues for both streets. Again, people that we don't know that are coming back and forth. We don't have that on our street, and I'm sure Countryview doesn't either. If somebody comes to the end of the road, they're intended on being at the end of the road. There's no unknown traffic, other than the Amazon or the FedEx or the UPS guy. So they keep calling this a Montessori school. Montessori schools have licensing that goes along with Montessori. There's a Montessori Association International. There's American Montessori Society. There's all types of rules and regulations that go along with Montessori. So this has nothing to do with Montessori. This is a microschool or a homeschool, if we're going to call it that. There's appropriate licensure. There's developing curriculum. There's qualified staff. There's suitable learning, suitable learning environments. There's all kinds of preparation that goes along with Montessori, and this is not it. So the last thing that I'll say to you is that the mortgage on this property was taken out by Sarah's mother and father. There is a mortgage amount on this house, and that amount was, is still in her mom and dad's name. And they have not occupied this residence. And it was purchased 10/18 of 2024. There's been no occupancy of this property, and that's mortgage fraud. So we have a greater issue here outside of just zoning and covenants. And I think that that's something that we need to consider. Thank you.
It won't be on a microphone, so, so just wait, wait. Or you let the gentleman let you go first, or?
I just want to say one thing to what she said. You want to do it then?
I'm going to mention it.
Okay, go for it.
Okay. My name is Dan Corrath. My wife, Mary Fran, and I have lived at, on Countryview Lane for about the last 30 years. My wife and I reside on a property that borders the proposed Headwaters Academy on the east side. And the executive director, Sarah Elliott, of the Headwaters Academy resides on the residential property directly on our south side. From our perspective, from the very beginning, the Headwaters Academy has been deceitful and evasive in the establishment of their organization. Let me point out what I'm talking about. Headwaters Academy appears to have been developing their business plan for quite a while, unbeknownst to the neighboring community and the village of Campden Hills. According to the Kane County Recorder records, the subject property was sold to Daniel B. and Sally A. Harmon, and the date recorded of the closing is October 8, 2024. A PTACs 203 Illinois Real Estate Transfer Declaration Form, prepared by the Law Offices of James F. Cook and recorded by Kane County Recorder Sandy Wegman, shows that the new owners indicated yes when asked, "Will the property be the buyer's principal residence?" They identify the property's current and intended primary use as a residence. On that form, the buyers checked the box that states, "Under penalties of perjury, I state that I have examined the information contained on this document, and to the best of my knowledge, it is correct and complete." Well, I guess these owners had a rapid change of heart because the Headwaters Academy filed for and received a federal 501(c)(3) tax exemption with an effective date of October 15, 2024. So to simply state my point, they closed on their new residential property on October 8, 2024, and one week later, on the 15th, the property is now part of a 501(c)(3) organization. Furthermore, they began operating in a business while avoiding proper notification of the village of Campden Hills or the affected residents. They have fully developed, they have a fully developed social media presence on the internet, including a website, Facebook, Instagram, YouTube, et cetera. The rollout of their social media presence fully promotes their plans for this school business. They are already taking registrations and telling their prospective parents and students that school will begin this August 2025, while they haven't even received all the proper approvals from local government bodies, and the place is not up to code for fire safety at the least. They have already held at least one open to the public event onsite to promote their school and to fundraise. Up until recently, no neighbors directly bordering this property nor any resident of the original Campden Hills Farm Development area were informed or consulted on the intended plan of converting this residence into a school business. As far as I know, they never informed the village of Campden Hills either. Eventually, neighboring residences found out and questioned the village about this change of property use, and subsequently, the village required the Headwaters Academy to notify their neighbors and schedule a public hearing. My wife and I are particularly concerned about this business moving into our residential neighborhood because it allow, if allowed to proceed, we are fearful that we will be bordered by this group on two sides, not just one. Let me explain this. The Headwaters Executive Director, Sarah Elliott Harmon, the daughter of subject property, of the subject property owners, lives next door to us on the south side. Her residence borders the subject property to the east also, as does ours. The executive director's parents, the Harmon's, are the new owners of the subject property on our east side. So there is undeniable cooperation and coordination between owners of both properties. Another recent development we discovered is that there are now people living in the executive director's barn in our, in her backyard. We think that one of the people that has taken up residence in the barn is the future head of school at Headwaters Academy. head of school at Headwaters Academy. If you inspect the website of this group, you'll find there are several nice photographs that promote the rural beauty and tranquility of the proposed school property. However, a red flag for me is that almost half of these pictures are taken of and from the residence of the executive director's property to our south, not from the five-acre school property. So my point here, why would you include all these pictures of the executive director's property on their south side if you're not intending to use that additional two-and-a-half acre property as part of the school business? The evidence suggests to us that is, that this planned school business area will be 50% larger than they are claiming, 50% larger than this hearing is addressing, and 50% larger than this committee in the village of Campton Hills has been told about, especially if that two-and-a-half acre residential property on our south is included in the nature-based school curriculum. So we also wonder if they are planning a new zoning variance or a quick claim deed or some, some were, to combine the 2.5 acre parcel with the, with the five acre parcel. They recently had the two-and-a-half acre parcel that Sarah lives on surveyed by evidence of survey stakes at the lot corners. Now, that's something you normally don't do unless there's this real estate transaction taking place or you're going to do some construction. So in closing, see, my wife and I have even greater concerns than what this hearing is focused on. The subject property at this hearing borders us on the east side, but we are fearful that the Headwaters Academy intends to include the two-and-a-half acre residence on our south side as well. We respectively recommend that this committee vote down the request to modify the residential zoning of the property and remain cognizant of the potential for them using the other two-and-a-half acre residence to our south for the school business as well. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Kazim Koutab. I am a resident of DeKalb, Illinois, and not originally from Illinois, actually, at all, but I'm glad to be with all you fine people here. I am actually one of the two teachers of this small school called Headwaters Academy. And what I've been hearing tonight are some very valid feelings coming from all different points of view. What I see here are two big ideas. Number one, all of the, the concern about the variance is based on what defines a school versus what defines a residence. What defines dwelling? What defines people living within a particular dwelling and how they use their property? When we talk about events at people's place of residence, do we include birthday parties? Size surely has to count for something, but I'm actually not here to go into the definitions of these things, though I urge those who are making the decision to consider those things. I would encourage you to look into what is the definition of a school. I think using that word has a very painful association for some of us, even as former students, but simply put, it's an institution for education. And what is education? I don't know if there's anyone in here who knows the etymology of education. As an educator of over 20 years on and off myself, and someone who just completed a Montessori certified program, and it will be accepting my certification as a teacher this summer, I know that this Montessori-inspired school is not a certified Montessori school, but we are taking many ideas from Montessori that I think are actually in line with your values. But first, what is education? A place of education, do we educate in our own homes? Those of you who have families, have we not taught our children? Education comes from the etymology, from the Latin word educare, which means to draw out, which is all these four mothers that are founding this school are trying to do. They are trying to draw out the best in their children, and by extension, other families as well. I hope you will take me at my word as I am understanding your concerns and fully believing where you're coming from, community members, that there's a lot of fear. There's fear around the word "school," but there was no ill intent, I can assure you. I am going to be sending my own son, I am intending to, if that's how the cards can, can be played. I'm sending my own son. I intend to send my own daughter, who is one years old right now. That is my intention. But that's because I want to draw out the best in my kids. The four mothers want to draw out the best in their kids, and believe it or not, we actually want to draw out the best in the community and in the natural environment. We did not have any ill will in trying to alter things. I think the second big idea that I have here that goes beyond definitions is, I really relate to what you're saying on the other side. I really understand, and I think we can speak all day long as supporters of Headwaters about what our vision is, and I think it is a big, beautiful vision, but I think the size of the vision is what's intimidating when the impact is actually quite small. We are a few families getting together, not 30 different families with 30 different SUVs coming up down the drive. We are separate families trying to come together post-COVID to say, hey, you know, this whole being homeschooling options and learning online really taught us that we have some flexibility with how people learn. The world is our school. I would urge you to think about it in that way. And what I know about Montessori that I've been studying intensely for two years, it's a peace-based curriculum. For those of you who don't know, Maria Montessori lived through World War I and World War II, which she had to flee Italy to go live in India because Mussolini was interested in her and shutting down her schools. She's very much first and foremost interested in promoting world peace. I've heard the word "peace" and "quiet" used by neighbors, and I really respect that. As a matter of fact, peace is a cornerstone of the Montessori curriculum. Montessori herself said that resolving conflicts is the work of politics. Establishing peace is the work of education. We want to be part of your community. We have absolutely no ill intent. Our job, and my job as a teacher, is to promote the community itself, is to promote the idea of quiet. Quiet is, in fact, part of the curriculum in which we sit in silence as students to just be silent, listening to the sounds of the bees on the property as we would if we lived every single family there. Part of it is to look at the beautiful landscape that you have cultivated, some of you, for all of your lives. Our job, simply put, is not reading, writing, and arithmetic, but to bring up children, to promote world peace, to live peacefully with our neighbors. And by that, I hope you'll trust me that the, everything that I will do in my power as one of the two educators in this very small school is to promote your sense of peace, your sense of quiet, and your sense of community, because that is the point of why I got into education. It's to bring the kids up into the world as it exists, yes, to eventually make it better, but to respect it, to love it, and to love our neighbors. And I appreciate the civility with which you've shared your opinions tonight.
Hi. My name's Mark Hodges, and I live on Country View for the last 30 years, and it's tough to be here to hear neighbors versus neighbors type stuff. It's very difficult. I am opposed to the school. I think my neighbors have presented their case quite well. I just want to make one comment about safety, which is really why I'm here, is the speed limit on Campton Hills Road is 50 miles an hour. I've never liked it, and it's a big issue. We put our kids through the public school system, took the school bus, picked up there at Country View and Campton Hills, and it can get a little nasty. There is a lot of traffic. I heard that there's not, well, there is, and I think that should be a big consideration. Thanks.
Hi. My name is Yana Hodges, and I'm the wife of Mark Hodges here, and I just want to touch on a few things. First of all, I am not opposed at the concept of Hedge Waters, or Headwaters Academy. I nanny children, a couple who have gone to Montessori schools. What I am concerned about, again, is the safety issue of adjoining properties that, that connect to this said property with the concern, is there going to be adequate fencing that will protect the children at this school? We all know that children can move at the speed of light, and one minute they're there and one minute they're not. And when you have free-range property with no adequate fencing that adjoins to other residential properties that have dogs, that have horses, kids are curious, and that is my concern as to whether they're going to provide adequate fencing to keep and protect the children that are at this school and also the privacy and the safety of the adjoining residents. The other concern I have is the, you know, which we've touched on, is the speed limit on Campton Hills. Yes, it's 50 miles an hour, but we all know, people who live here, people don't go 50 miles an hour. I'm going to say it's an average of 55 to 70 miles an hour, and we're talking hot rods, motorcyclists, bikists, and your ordinary person driving down the road. And yes, at times, traffic can be heavy, heavy in the mornings when people are going to work and late afternoon when they're coming home. During the midday, not so much, but I have been on Campton Hills as a bike rider, as a dog walker, and I have been faced with heavy traffic at times, so there is definitely a safety issue concern there and blind spots for not just the people that are trying to leave Hedge Water, Headwaters, I'm sorry, but also the traffic that is coming and going, not adequately being able to see vehicles coming out of this driveway. And it, and it's an issue because you don't necessarily see the cars coming out until it's too late, if you're going 70 miles an hour especially, or even 55 miles an hour, and the blind spots. So I'm hoping that if this ends up moving forward, that this, these safety issues will be addressed, not just for the children that are on the property, but the adjoining property and the residents and the other children on these joint, adjoining properties, along with the safety of the animals and the traffic coming and going on Campton Hills Road. Thank you.
Hi. My name is Heather Fort Camp, and I am a resident of Campton Hills for the past 23 years, and I am also a public educator that's been involved in education for, with my own students and in teaching positions for over 34 years. I do feel like there is a valid place for this school, but I just don't think it is in our covenanted neighborhood. Several of my reasons for that are, from my knowledge, Campton Hills has specific zoning laws that typically restrict educational institutions, including private schools, to designated commercial or institutional zones. Specifically, single-family residential zones are primarily intended for residential use, which usually excludes schools. So I am asking that the village board uphold these restrictions and not vote to go forward with changing the purpose of a property located at 42 West 420 Campton Hills Road from residential to a school or institutional venue. In reading the Village of Campton Hills zoning ordinance as adopted by Kane County, I found something interesting on page 19. The standard for variance 4.43 states, no variations shall be made unless the zoning board finds that such variations will not, one, diminish the value of adjacent land and buildings. I believe this school will diminish the value of my horse property and other neighborhood properties significantly. My property borders this on the northwest side, and there's a bridle path that goes around our subdivision so, that can be accessed and people could easily get to my horses. No horse owners will want their horses to be located next to a school and exposed to the public noise, onlookers, or students who might wander to see them, nor will they want the responsibility for the liability this can create by such close proximity. With the proposed school and their fundraising events, I have big concerns about living adjacent to the property with my horses. Horses are a big enticement for people, and my horse's safety and health is of great concern. I have seen public viewers of horses with no experience feed them without consenting the owners of dietary restrictions or choke hazards. Horses can get sick and even die from inconsideration and ignorance. I have also seen them get excited when horses spook or run, and encourage them through arm movements and other methods to continue to run, as this is quote, "fun to see them run." It is dangerous witnessing horses who are spooked run through fences due to, to fear. It is horrific for all involved. This is a potential risk of the public being invited into a space intended for residential use as an equine community. I am aware of lawsuits that have also taken place when horse owners have been sued by trespassers due to entering a horse property without permission or an owner's guidance and getting hurt by a horse, such as a bite, a hard nuzzle, a step on the foot, or even a zap from an electric fence. I do not want to take out even more insurance on my property due to the change of this property variance nor place signs all over my property about trespassing. Horses are large animals and can get hurt and hurt someone easily. I would hate for this to happen to either humans or animals. The second thing that I noticed was, it shall not increase the congestion or traffic hazards in public, public streets. The potential of more cars, 30-plus, added two times per day to the street five days a week will impact traffic during busy times of the day, adding noise, air pollution, road repairs, confusion, and possible accidents due to the fast, fast speed limit of Campton Hills Road. The driveway of 42 West 420 Campton Hills Road is located at the bottom of the big, of a big hill. This is potential for more accidents with more traffic due to poor visibility coming over the hill if cars get backed up. In addition, there are many cyclists and pedestrians that use the road regularly throughout the day. The third thing was, it shall not otherwise impair public health, safety, comfort morals, and general welfare. The Headwaters Academy will add increased noise, septic waste, potential water contamination, as well as decreased equine safety, and diminish the peaceful neighborhood ambience, not to mention drive out some of the natural creature habitats by increasing the public population in our small neighborhood. We are being asked to increase the daily population in the community by growing 50% at one residential location. The Campton Hills subdivision covenant states that no track shall be used for any business or commercial purpose. In closing, I moved to this property knowing it had a covenant designed for an equine community, and my property value would not be decreased due to a school or business being created in a residential home next to my property. I believe that my horses could remain safe and I could enjoy them in the equine community without fear of lawsuits. The thought of a school today, but perhaps later, if it changes, being a wedding venue or even something more in the future is not okay to bring to a quiet neighborhood with no surrounding businesses. Changing the variances of neighboring property to a non-residential status is in your hands. Please vote no in this proposed property special use variance. There are many reasons this should not be part of it. I love the idea of the school, and as an educator feel that it's important, but this is not the right location for it. Thank you.
My name is Hal Broton. I live on Campton Hill Road. I've been out there since 1973, and I have a, I just want to touch on the parking aspect of what partially has been touched on here. We're going to have 25 or 30 students in here. That means probably 25 or 30 cars at, what, 9:00 in the morning, 3:00 in the afternoon, possibly, however the hours are. And that's going to probably increase year after year. And what's going to happen with the driveway set up the way they have it now, it's a U-shaped driveway, and it looks like you can get about four or five cars in there at a time. So cars are going to be sitting on Campton Hill Road in the westbound lane, trying to make a right-hand turn, and in the eastbound lane, trying to make a left-hand turn, and they're going to have to cooperate. And they're going to have to cooperate to go in that driveway as cars pull out after they discharge the students. Now, while they're sitting on this two-lane street, there's normal traffic who wants to go to work or whatever, both ways, and they can't because there's cars parked out there in the lane trying to make that turn. So that's going to create a big issue. And then in the wintertime, when these cars are trying to get in in both ways during a snowstorm and the snowplow is coming, that's going to create an issue if it's all happening at the same time. And of course, across the street, we have two farms, and there's heavy utility traffic there, tractors, large farming implements that take up one and a half to two lanes as they go through. Now, are they going to have to stop because this traffic is trying to coordinate itself in the driveway? Sounds to me a little like we have a future issue for the Campton Hill Police to look at here, for traffic control. That's all I have to say about it.
Hello, I'm Craig McDuffie. My wife spoke earlier tonight. I'm actually here to represent other neighbors on Country View Lane that could not participate and would like to submit their letters to the zoning board. I'm going to read a little bit of it. So Frank and Phyllis Del Grazie live on Country View Lane. They are the closest in proximity without touching the said property. And they're writing in their letter to voice their opposition to the zoning variance. They built their home 23 years ago, understanding it was a residential area for the beautiful, quiet, and, you know, very considerate neighbors that are in that neighborhood, because we've all been there for many years. It'd be unfair in that school area to cause stress to the neighborhood, like most people have said already tonight, the safety issue, the noise, the drainage issues on the property, and the increased traffic in the area. The area, like stated before, in the covenants, is zoned only for residential or agriculture, and so they would like to keep it that way. Our other neighbors, Paul and Sue Brinkworth, again, they're on Country View Lane. They've lived in their house since 1996. You know, they moved there for the same reason, the peaceful neighborhood. Their concerns really are the same as everybody else's, you know, where will the staff park? You know, how will traffic flow, work in that particular area? You know, what will happen, again, if we have torrential rains and that lower area floods, which it has many, many times over the years due to the Mill Creek? And so that's their main concerns with the situation, too. Be happy to submit their letters. Thank you.
Should I put my reading glasses on, sorry?
Hi, my name is Kevin Fortcamp. I better have spoke a little bit ago. We live adjoining that property on the northwest side. Our horse pasture is back up to that property. My family found out about this project indirectly and shortly after Hedwaters Academy held their open house and fundraising event. At the time, Hedwaters Academy already had a website advertising an August 25 start date. Around that time, also had a scheduled event link to reserve the property outside of school use. Hedwaters did this without reaching out to any of the neighbors. If they had, they would have been made aware of the undue burden, risk, and impact to the properties directly connected to proposed Hedwaters Academy site, as well as the neighboring community. When we purchased our property, it was important that we were in a horse community neighborhood that had areas we were adjacent to were undeveloped and residential. We chose our location because it was protected by covenants and restrictions directly prohibiting non-farm or non-residential usage of any lands or lots surrounding us. Covenants directly addressed horses and even ensured a bridle path easement to be used for riding purposes, and it seemed ideal for my family residence. That bridle path can't be fenced off or protected, and there's access between those two properties to the bridle path, so there is no fencing of Hedwaters to not allow access to the horse Having horses on our property becomes a very large liability when unfamiliar and inexperienced individuals can access our horses. Horses naturally draw children to them, and courts have held owners liable in very unreasonable situations. We are unable to financially protect ourselves. If there were a school of children adjacent to our horse pasture, any incident could actually bankrupt us or financially hurt us greatly. We work with our direct neighbors and help familiarize their children and grandchildren with horses to minimize any risk and harm to either people or horses. This was something limited and achievable with our direct neighbors and their families. It can't be replicated with schoolchildren. It isn't available to, you know, hey, come over and look at this and introduce and acquaint them with that and make it safe. And again, the bridle path going through the subdivision gives easy access for the schoolchildren to all the horse properties in the neighborhood, because that's what the bridle path is for, is to connect all the horse properties and allow a riding path around our neighborhood. My property value and our community property values are based on being suitable to have horses on your property. Having a school adjacent to the subdivision and our property would severely diminish the value, as well as increase our liability. If Hedwaters had talked to us earlier, we could have shared these concerns, maybe avoided where we are today. It's not a suitable place to build a school. I also have concerns over Mills Creek running underground along the property and waste from overuse of a septic field contaminating it. The covenants that also protect the land from non-residential also require sanitary facilities to be maintained in residential building. That means they can't use porta potties for events, and all the school wasted would utilize the current residential septic field, which couldn't possibly handle such an increased load. Runoff from overused septic field likely will disperse into the creek when large rains and floods happen. I share concerns about Campton Hills Road. There's also a lot of semi trucks that run grain in the fall time up and down that road. Their entrance is at the bottom of a dip, so heading one direction, it's hard to see the entrance on it. We've been thinking about things in ideal situations. There's deep fog in the morning that blocks visibility during raining conditions, during ice conditions. It'll be treacherous on that road, and the last thing you want to do is have anyone stopping in that area or causing issues. The other thing that, you know, it's likely the facilities will not accommodate the traffic needed, as people said, leaving cars to be stopped in or parked alongside Campton Hills Road, you know, during pickup, drop-off, or special event timing. This is going to be an uncontrollable situation involving kids going to and from cars. And ideally, we say it won't happen, but they're kids, and you can't control the kids. So the other thing I'm thinking is, eventually, it's going to lead to even more things like maybe a school zone trafficking on that road, which will impact us, bringing in a school zone of some type to make it safer, or converting to a large parking lot off of Campton Hills Road, which would be an ugly eyesore and inappropriate for a residential piece. So as they go forward and they build, it's going to lead to more and more requirements and impact to keep things safe or, you know, doable. So please vote no on this proposed property special use variance. It's not a suitable location for a school. And then forcible covenants that protect the greater Campton Hills Farm subdivision area, which includes this parcel and surrounding subdivision, prohibits the type of property used without allowing for any special use considerations or exceptions. So those covenants don't allow for anything special to be, it's black and white. There are no exceptions to it. Thank you for your time.
Good evening. My name is Nancy Roxworthy. I've lived in the St. Charles area for 50 years, and I live on the corner of Farmview Road and Campton Hills Road. The back of my property meets the front inside of the Hedwaters School. Virtually every car that comes in there, I will view from my yard. And I've lived at this home for 25 years. My husband and I bought here because, again, like everyone, we love the gardening, animals, the country setting. My husband passed away 14 years ago, but I continue to live here because I love my neighborhood and I work close by at Donora Hospital. My neighbors lend a helping hand when I need some assistance, and they help me feel safe. I have a neighbor who plows my driveway in the winter. I receive calls at work about a fallen tree that miraculously is just moved off the property by the time I get home. Or someone tells me about a strange car that they see in the driveway. When I go away on vacation, there's always help watering plants, taking care of animals. Everyone pitches in. Everyone is just kind to each other. The bottom line, everyone looks out for each other. That's what people in a residential area do. This proposed school will bring greater than 30 unknown cars to my backyard every day. The feeling of safety will change drastically. Not wanting a school next to me, or it's not based on any problem I have. I love children. Education is in my family, my mothers, sisters, daughters, they're all educators. I have a great respect for education, but there's a place. And our neighborhood was deemed to be a resident, not a school. I believe everyone has the expectation of quiet at home, and kids will be loud. That's just the nature of kids. So when you come home, do you want the noise in your backyard or the peace and quiet that you bought the home in the first place? With a commercial venture in my backyard, safety will decrease and noise will increase. Thank you.
Anyone else?
Hi, gentlemen. My name's Kendra Holton. I'm a 15-year resident of Northern Illinois and have hoped to spend the rest of my life here, ideally in Campton Hills, if I can ever make it in. It's very beautiful here. I've spent some time on faculty at NIU. I'm a mom, a co-founder of Hedwaters, and I have a background in climate adaptation and community sustainability. So I wanted to briefly, without repeating anything that's been said, just talk about our alignment with the village mission of ecological and environmental stewardship. And then I'm going to address a little bit of misinformation here and clear some things up. So as a farm-based nature school, our entire educational model is built on the direct engagement with and protection of local resources. That's at the root of everything we do. We're talking about hands-on conservation efforts from young people, which we believe is necessary to build a profound respect for the place where they live and raise them into adults who will protect us when they're in leadership positions and we're not able to do with anymore. These students will have a deep understanding of ecological principles in this place. We're going to work with the local flora and fauna of the village. That means they're going to be outside on the property, so of course, we've looked at the fencing, of course, we've looked at safety, we've heard the concerns, and we've met them every time they arrive. The back part of the property is fully fenced in. The children will not be in the front part of the property that has access to that bridle path. If you stood on the property, you can see that where it meets these equestrian properties, the brush is so thick, a child couldn't get through there if they tried. And if that weren't the case, we'd be putting in a lot of fencing, and we will if we have to. We're prepared to meet this. We're very reasonable. So I could go on about our practices, right? Low waste, no waste, our intent to lower the footprint of the property and leave it better than we ever found it. But what I want you to hear simply is that we are innately aligned with your intention for stewardship by design. Children are community members. They're not annoying, they're not a nuisance, they're not something we should tuck away. This is why the majority of American schools are in neighborhoods, right? In places like this, places like Northern Illinois, the rural schoolhouse existed so kids could walk from their farms and go to school. Schools belong in neighborhoods. Hedwaters is a micro-school. There's actually not a number definition on what it is, it just means a small school. But our school's the equivalent of one public school classroom. In D 303, that's an average of 22 students. We don't even have that many yet. We're going to cap at 25. So it's like the noise of a small birthday party. That's what we're talking about, and only on the occasion when the kids are outside. There's been a lot of numbers here thrown around and assumptions about how many cars will be there, but we've done the math. We put in a driveway that can hold the 12 to 15 cars that we anticipate. We did that strategically so that there is not traffic lingering on Campton Hills Road. We've looked at where parking can go. And listen, it's true. We had a website that had events on it. It's not abnormal for a school to host events as a part of a financial strategy. School districts have entire teams for this, so there's no ill intention. We took the website down to further investigate what the concern was and then look at what we have to do. There's no secret to it, all right? There's been a lot of concern about property value, but it's apparent that the people who neighbor the property have not looked at the property value estimations for their properties, which have gone up 15 to 20% since the purchase of that property set a significantly higher benchmark in the neighborhood. These concerns are unwarranted. Additionally, families are coming from three or four counties to come to the school because we can't find it where we are. We want it so desperately for our kids. I come all the way from DeKalb, and I have to do that. So we're looking at a demand in housing that will further drive up property values, not looking at diminished values. And of course, we know about the covenant. It's been mentioned a lot here tonight. You have a copy of it. I respectfully ask that you consider, is the neighborhood uniformly upholding this covenant, or is it being weaponized against us? Because the outbuildings I see on nearly every property and the registered businesses on Google from Farmview Road suggest that it's being weaponized and not uniformly upheld. So this is not a black and white issue. We have the potential to be a crown jewel in your community, to be something really exceptional, that people come from all over because they cannot get it where they are. So I hope you'll get to know us. And you know what? Even if we were an average school, it'd be normal to have us in a neighborhood. So by supporting us with this variance, you can help build your stewardship legacy, and we really look forward to helping you build that as well. We ask for fair consideration, please. Thank you.
Jerry, does anybody else want to speak first who hasn't had a chance to speak?
Yeah, I'd like to.
Okay. If you don't mind, just wait and everybody else gets a chance first. Okay, thank you.
Hello, gentlemen. I live in Campton Hills on Country View Lane.
I'm sorry, your name, sir?
Jean Sarico.
Jean Sarico, thank you.
Just follow the money here. This is what I'm concerned with. There's a distressed piece of property here that this young lady lives in. All of a sudden, the house goes up for sale, and nobody knows about it. They paid $400,000 over asking price, and now her property is already staked out. So what's going on here? If another piece of property goes up for sale, are they going to grab that one, too? I don't know. I mean, things grow. Where's this going to... Where's this going to stop? Where's it going to end? It's a good concept for a school, just not here. There's a farm for sale right down La Fox Road. Beautiful place. Should check that out. And they could have all the people they want there. That's all I got to say. And you're going to lose tax revenue too. And then we're going to have to pay for that, right? 501(c)(3). Isn't that a tax exempt? Think about it.
Again, my name is Ray Santafer. In amending my previous comments, a proposed teacher, or I'll say employee of Headwaters Academy, made the statement that this is to be a farm-based educational endeavor. So that brings into mind additional livestock and animal concerns. Are there expected any exceptions or changes to the rules pertaining to the upkeep of animals on the property? And what impact does that pose either to the land or the surrounding area? Further, I'm a little bit confused. I thought the variance was for a special use of a school, not for a rezoning to agricultural use. Thank you.
Anybody else, any comments they'd like to share?
I'd like to add a question and say something else.
Okay.
I've sat and listened. My name is Diane. I've sat and listened to everybody. I understand the school, the kids. I had a great education, but education starts with telling the truth. There has been so many misconceptions, so many hidden lies. Even your document, they signed a legal document saying that this would be a residential home. So I'm sorry, but I can't trust anything that they say, that they're going to do it a certain way. I don't have any faith in that. So that would be another issue that I have a concern with. If they can't even follow the legal document that they've signed and they've told a number of neighbors different things and I've heard so many different things on top of it tonight, I have no faith that they will follow through and do the right thing if this is granted. So I continue to oppose it even more so now strongly.
Hi, Cosm Kootab. Again, one of the two proposed staff members. I just wanted to address one factual piece of information, which we can come back with exact figures as we settle towards our 25 cap, which we're aiming for, which we do not have confirmed. Quick factual check on that. We are not looking to grow in terms of size, to expand buildings and expand population. We intend on quality versus quantity of our student population. We want a nice, comfortable little bit of size for our very home-based, working off of the farm that we have. We have the garden that's out there. Farm is a very loose term as well. I mean, we are not looking to, every kid gets a cow. This is about, we're in a farming community, so it's a farm-based educational model. We are working off of what we have. We are not looking to expand student-wise. We are not looking to expand agriculturally. And for the sake of just numbers, to keep in mind, my associate Kendra talking about the capacity of our driveway. I know that's a very, I hear you on that concern of traffic and all that. The capacity of our driveway should be definitely noted. We should also note that many people will be staff kids, therefore double dipping there. We will have siblings there. We are not talking about 30 separate vehicles, even capped at full capacity 25. The amount of vehicles is never going to be 25 singular vehicles. We have staff kids, we have siblings to keep in mind there. I want to also end this with, this has been a very, obviously an emotional issue for a lot of people. We're talking about the investment of people's children, but also investment in legacy. I hear that on the other side. But I want to thank, I want to close with just a little thank you to the other side in earnest because we do share a lot of values and one value that I've really, really appreciated is the concern for safety. I believe we have those issues addressed, as my friend Kendra said as well. But I appreciate that you're looking, most of you are looking at this from the concern of safety for the future, safety for our children. Thank you for trying to look out for them. We got it, but I really appreciate that you care about that first and foremost. That shows good faith to me and I hope you'll feel the same way about us.
Is that allowed?
Yes.
Yeah, sure.
It's allowed.
Are you not looking to expand to high school beyond eighth grade? Wouldn't that increase?
See, this is why numbers, this is why verbiage is so important. Expanding is not in terms of growing to, oh, let's bring on 11-year-olds, 11 grades, 11th grade, 12th grade. We are expanding the range of curriculum that we can do as our students grow so that the eighth graders, who are eighth grade now, we can expand for you when you enter ninth grade, that we can expand that curriculum for you. It's very much customized to the small population of students. We are not looking to bring in extra high schoolers. We're growing with our students, but we are trying to keep it within a very small home community. I mean, if you've been in the property itself, we can't fit more than an average birthday party. We just couldn't. There's no way.
Hi, my name is Karen Broton and I live on Campden Hills Road. And it's nice to hear how everybody is so happy to have their children well-educated and everything. All I have to say is Campden Hills Road is not for a school. Wasco, La Fox, Elburn has so many properties for rent. Go there. You have no problem with parking there and I'm sure you have no problem with all the facilities or anything else. So look at going there and please stay out of our area.
Are there any other people who would like to speak at this time? If not, I'm going to open it up to a discussion with the commissioners here and also possibly ask the petitioners some questions and allow us to be able to answer that. So before we do that, I just want to give one more chance. Anybody want to make a comment? No? Okay. A couple of things first. Let me just say that this is a request for a special use within a zoning. The current zoning is a state residential, residential estate too. There is no change to the zoning, okay? It's not changing the zoning of the property. It's still residential. In our zoning ordinance, there are permitted uses, there are non-permitted uses and there are special uses. So a residential, many residential have a special use for schools. So this is the petitioner asking for that special use within that current zoning. So my first point is zoning is not changing, but they are asking for a special use within that zoning. All right? The other point I've heard come up a lot is about the covenants and restrictions. The village of Campden Hills, the covenants and restrictions are for the homeowners and that subdivision. They run the covenants and restrictions for that subdivision, all right? The village does not have jurisdiction, or is a jurisdiction, that's not the proper word, they don't enforce covenants and restrictions. That is up to the homeowners association to do. So I understand some people have made some comments about, hey, this is what's not allowed in the coven restrictions. That's not what the village does. The village doesn't do that, all right? So that is for the homeowners association to deal with. If they feel that the covenants and restrictions are being violated in any way, shape or form, that's a way for them to deal with. That is the way to deal with it, all right? The village is not going to enforce covenants and restrictions for homeowners associations and all, that's not the legal authority for the village to do. Just another quick comment too. There was a question that came up about animals, what they're offering, you know, kind of animal stuff. That is in our zoning ordinance and depending on what the zoning is, what animals, and that was extensively done at the last rewrite of the zoning ordinance. And then one of the comments, someone mentioned about the King County. There's a new zoning ordinance, which was adopted last year. So if you're looking at the King County ordinance that we adopted, it might not be the same. So I just want to make sure that's clear when we're researching stuff. There is a zoning ordinance of just last year that was adopted by the village. Okay. Those are the big kind of picture things I wanted to ask. I have a few questions that I'd like to ask and then I don't know if the other members have any questions they'd like to ask. Ms. Elliott, would you mind? Or you can also ask one of your other co-odds to assist, but let me just ask a few questions to try to clarify some of the information that we're hearing and some of the concerns we're hearing. I guess that one of the big concerns is the capacity, how many people, all right?
Yes.
And I think there's a limit, but we don't know where that limit is. Okay? So do you have an upper limit that you feel that you would never have more than that, a number of students that you could pick?
I would like 30 to be our upper limit right this year. We're going to cap at 25.
Okay. All right. So I'm just trying to get a ballpark so everybody else understands that. Okay, so 25 is kind of the upper limit, but you know, 30 is probably the max.
Yeah. The fire code allows for 100.
Okay. So and that brings up another good question. So this is a residential building. This is basically a residential house.
Right.
It's a house, right? So now we're having a lot of people in there, more than a resident, a family of six or four, whatever, four-bedroom house. So concerns of septic, infrastructure is where I'm going.
Yeah.
So we have septic.
Yeah.
I understand someone has been in contact. I called the King County Health and Human Services.
Yes.
So someone has been in contact.
Yes.
I understand.
I called them also, yes.
So you are working, have they given you some direction or guidance?
They said that typically the municipalities have to request, so it would need to come from you. Like I asked if I could do it and they said, that's not typically what we do. Usually municipality, if they would like the septic assessed. And then I pay for a private, a company to do the inspection and then I submit the inspection to the county board, the health department.
Okay.
Yeah.
I would see that as a...
Yes.